We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Welcome to South Burlington School Board meeting. And are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll move to amendments to the agenda.
Yeah, we have one amendment. We need to add an executive session at the end of our agenda for the purposes of collective bargaining.
All right, we'll note that, and then we'll move on to Agenda Item Four of setting the 2016 announced tuition rate.
So at your place, you actually have a document in front of you. We talked about this last time, so this is a slight change with the new data in it for you. And so the recommendation that we're recommending are as follows for both secondary, elementary, and special education services. John, do you want to just walk the board through the changes from the previous rate that was, that we shared with them?
Well, the previous was just a worksheet to show where we would go and what I used as an estimate. What I did in our office on Thursday was plug in our recommended budget into a formula that all schools use that separates high school expenses, direct expenses, and secondary school, the seventh and eighth grade, into a pot, and all the K-5 expenses, then allocates district expenses. So it's, everybody's on the same playing field with the, with the, with the formula. So when we put that into the formula, the, really, the rate here that means the most is the secondary school rate of $15,192. Elementary, we've calculated, but we don't have any kids come here from other schools. And special ed, it depends on the program and the IEP, but we, we calculate a rate based on current expenses. So the key rate here is the $15,192. If you look at your budget questions, the very first one deals with the estimated rate that we had used of $14,600 and shows the difference. If, if we use the allowed rate of $15,192, that would generate another $66,000 of revenue that we could apply to our, as, as local revenue.
And are we, are we at risk at that level of tuition of students or districts making different choices, John?
I, I do know that one competitor has announced $13,600.
Mm-hmm.
That's Colchester. And I think we're, I don't know about the others. I don't know. We've always had a differential. We were above the median. We've historically been above the median.
One thing I noticed, and I did, I tried to see if I had it in my packet, but I don't, I can't find it, but I noticed that we were kind of, not in the middle, but in, in the upper middle of the pack.
I can pull that up.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
But I also noticed that the top two schools are not really schools we compete with.
Not competitors.
So if you look at it that way, we are, we were the number one of sort of the, the next three, so the, the three that we compete with. And I guess my fundamental question with that is, my perception is that that would put us at the highest tuition rate of the schools that are drawing students from, from the same population. So I, I do have a concern, I guess in general, that I don't think the percentage increase is out of line. I don't think the absolute incremental dollars are out of line. But if you're in a sending district and you're looking at over $15,000, that's pretty significant. So I, I guess I would just ask the question of, what's the message we want to send relative to appreciating the fact that many districts do send tuition students to South Burlington? And it's a choice, and they get a great education, but we also get some significant revenue for that, and it allows us to continue our programs.
Sorry, let me load that report, but the, the difference was, we were $300 per, per student above Essex and about $1,500 above Colchester. So to speak to your point, and Winuski and Burlington were the two schools that were above us.
Yeah.
So I guess, and I would add from the letter that we got from the Grand Isle School Board, or actually, which school board? Well, it's Grand Isle School.
Yeah, Grand Isle.
I mean, that, that has me concerned along those same lines. If they're going to potentially be in a position to designate a couple of receiving schools and leave us off, off the list, that, that could be a bad situation. But I, but I also was wondering still, and I wonder if we had an answer for this, on whether Essex or Colchester provide laptops to their students.
Essex does.
Essex does?
Mm-hmm. I don't know about Colchester.
They don't.
So Colchester doesn't, so.
They did reinstate, either reinstate or kept bus service. I know they have one bus that goes up there.
We also, I mean, we, again, I'm not sure what's planned in the future, and we're talking about projected. You know, we view us provide after-school activity bus as well, so we don't only run them at the end of the academic day, we also have to have an activity bus to both the islands and Georgia. And that really is to ensure that the students are feeling welcomed and able to participate in all of the programs without putting a significant burden on the parent or guardian to bring them back and forth, so.
Yeah, even when there was a study session Sunday night, you guys ran aboves, right?
Absolutely. And again, I don't, you know, maybe that's in, in there forecasted, that's something that we've been doing for a good bit, and, you know, that's, that's a cost to us, but it's, we believe it's really an important part of the high school experience.
I found that, that document, that Winuski's the highest, Burlington the second highest. South Burlington, at least last year, was about $400 more than Essex and $1,500 more than Colchester.
Do we, do we know if Essex or Colchester, is that their rates, John?
Colchester did, $13,600.
Well, they went up significantly because they were $12,322 last year.
Right, right.
Well, the, you know, the percentage increase is consistent with the, the biggest investment that we make, which is in our staff and, and benefits. So that, I think there's a really solid rationale for administration's recommendation. I guess, I guess the one comment I'd make is, I know we're good about communicating the value for that. I think we can always over-communicate that and, and document everything from the laptops to the bus services to the after-school activities and so forth. I also think we, you know, we may want to be particularly sensitive to those districts who are looking at potentially designating choices too, and, and just be open to those conversations.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we do certainly deliver a great education for the students who choose to come here.
The, the concern that the school board, I think it was Grand Isle School Board wrote to the board here, was the rate, but also guaranteeing that rate even after the year's over and the allowed tuition is, comes into play.
Yeah, so we have the announced, and then we have allowable.
Okay.
And where in the past, and we've probably talked about this before, but where in the past, a lot of districts have concerns that the announced tuition rate is at X, and then the allowable, that, that net difference is pretty significant. And so the back billing that then happens is, falls upon some real hardship at that point.
But we're not being asked to take action on that.
No, no, we're not. We're, we're, we're being asked to, on an announced tuition rate this evening.
So is it at all likely that the allowable would be less than this recommendation?
There are provisions in the law that have a, it's a 3 percent, is that correct, John?
You have a 3 percent variance.
3 percent variance.
Either way, right.
So yeah, it, it is possible, and it's then again at the board's decision on what you would want to do with, on the allowable. And obviously, for budget planning, they'd like, you know, I think everybody would like to have what's in their budget be the announced, right? And that would like, likely to be close to what you're going to, you know, be at for your allowable.
Have we been stuck with the announced?
Pretty close.
The last couple of years have been, these are very close, or?
The only exception was fiscal '13 when it ended. We, we were significantly under, and so we did a billing to Grand Isle and to Georgia, which was pretty significant. It's only one times in seven years we've done any significant billing.
Do we owe, do we owe them a response to that letter?
I believe we, I mean, we should. I think in, in the spirit of, you know, good communication, we would do that. Again, I'm going to be at an all-member meeting tomorrow, and I would certainly see Bob Phillips, and I would let him know that, but also follow up with a formal email along with whatever you so decide.
And also, I think that history, that seven-year history is relevant, too, that that's only been done once.
Mm-hmm.
So would it make sense for us to resolve that this is the fixed rate unless there's some, unless the allowed rate is significantly less? I mean, that's a, I'm only trying to respond to their desire for stability.
Right.
I don't know, John, I mean, you know more about what might be the possibility of movement in that area.
Well, if it was, if this was $15,192 and we overestimated it by 3%, the law says you don't have to adjust that, but if it's 3.1%, we probably, we probably should. It's, it's overbilling and it's the board's.
So you'd readjust to the downward, but I think to John, to Dan's point.
Is if the allowable's higher, we wouldn't go up to the higher one, we would stay at this number.
I think that's your point, right?
That's what I was suggesting. If, I'm asking, I'm asking if it makes sense. I guess that's what I'm actually doing, okay?
Does, does that make sense, Sean? And I guess I'd also add, it could be precedent setting, too.
It could be. I think it makes sense. I, I think we're at the point, in, in past years, we've had to do this more in a, in a, more in a vacuum because the budget, we didn't do it the same night we're, want to finish the budget. It was a couple of weeks before, and we were guessing to what the budget would be. So I think we're pretty solid. And last year, when the announced tuition was compared with the allowed, we were only off $100 per kid, so I think we have the system.
And what I might say would be appropriate is that we inform them that we would very much like to keep our announced and allowable very close. And we're very conscious of the financial issues, and we're going to do our very best. Obviously, if there's some huge significant change, that way it doesn't box you in, but you've communicated the, the strong desire to keep your allowable and your announced the same, possible.
So can, can I ask again, what is the Essex?
I don't know.
I don't know what they're doing, you know? They're quite, I think they're deciding tonight, too. I'm pretty sure. I talked with them Friday.
And this has to be decided tonight before we understand what they're doing?
Yeah.
Also, it's a big part of our budget, too, so, I mean, or it's a part of our budget, so it has, you know, an effect, as John said earlier.
So are we at a point where we can take a motion to approve the tuition rate as recommended by administration?
Sure.
We have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, I would ask, I mean, are we going to take up what Dan's suggestion is, that we're not going to go higher than that? Do we need to vote on that?
Well, I think we heard a suggestion that we commit to that in writing, and David suggested that he have that conversation a little less formally.
Okay.
So does somebody want to amend the emotion, or amend the emotion, the motion? So the motion stands? I think we're ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, tuition rate is approved.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, John.
So when, when this does come up in our budget, we'll, we'll, again, what we prepared, we'll make some changes to, to that with respect to your action tonight, and you'll see that reflected.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, the School Community Master Planning Task Force update.
Great, so we have a couple gentlemen, Art Klugo and John Wilkin, in the off, in the audience with us tonight and not in the office. I know they've been in the office most of the time, but gentlemen, we're happy to have you join us to give us a little bit of an update on some of those other duties that you've been volunteering for. But it's my pleasure, really, to have them both here. Art is chairing the, the task force. John's a very active member, but the two of them wanted to come tonight and update the board on some of the activities, some of the dialogue, some of the communication and data, et cetera. They have about 15 minutes, they want to leave about five minutes just to get any feedback from you folks as well. So Art and John, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A little different arrangement from the one I'm used to, where we have the table and we can come up and engage the, the board, but we'll make this work. As David said, John and I are part of a 12 or 13-person task force that has a diversity from status decisions to business owners to just parents and educators in the community. We've been meeting now since early November to talk about some of the challenges in the community around pressure from the airport, demographics, the offer that's on the table for Rick Marcot Central, and try to flesh out what may or may not happen with that. We're currently engaged in a data gathering effort right now. We've developed some options through the help of Frank Locker and his team, who was hired back in 2008 to develop the original master plan envisioning. We started out looking at that and then have layered on top of that options based on the additional information that we've learned since November. We really haven't gotten to the point yet where we can start to take these options and filter them and push the ones aside that clearly will not work, primarily because we haven't gone to the community yet and asked for the community's input. We have a community prep meeting coming up in, in January and expect to go to the community in the middle of February, get their feedback, and then come back together as a committee, as a committee, and overlay their feedback on top of the information that we have, start to filter the options down, look at those, come back to the steering committee, I believe, at that point, and then back to the community. Ultimately, as the schedule is laid out right now, we would, it's expected that we would have a recommendation around March 19th. There's some wiggle room in that depending on exactly what sort of information we get, whether we have enough to completely engage the community. Some of that depends on whether there's some questions that come back from the community that we need to dig deeper on in order to update our options. We understand as a task force that there's a desire to have a ballot initiative for this June. Whether or not we can make that will depend on how the process moves forward from here on out, but everybody's hard at work, rolling up their sleeves and certainly going through a lot of information at this point.
If I could add, part of, part of our, our initial mandate was, was to look at, at the schools, not for the next five years, in 10 years, but to look at it over the next 50 years. The school we're sitting in, I assume, is about 50 years old. And so, and so we're, this is a, this is a much bigger task than, than I think some of us recognize walking in the door. And when you layer on top of that some of the city issues and city, city buildings that are part of it, the data gathering has been much greater, as David can attest, than, than I think any of us expected. We've had, we've had a number of four-hour meetings that could have gone six hours or eight hours, and they just, it just kept coming, and we'd find ourselves getting halfway through the, the agenda, only to wrap up and push it off to the next time. So we are, we are getting close to the end of the data gathering.
That's a great point, because it does influence our ability to meet that March 19th deadline. A 50-year vision is a lot different than a five- or a 10-year vision, and we know, you've seen the numbers, that the student demographics, the population, student population is declining, and it's going to impact how we manage our resources. Do we still go forward with three schools? Do we look at the offer for Central and look at consolidation? If we're looking at consolidation, do we consolidate to Chamberlain and Orchard and try to develop magnet schools? Do we look at consolidation away from a decentralized model and look at maybe bringing our K-4 or K-5 together in a whole new school, someplace on a new site, and repurpose the community or the existing schools as potential community centers? There's a lot of moving parts to this right now, and, and we need to get the feedback from our community members to really get a sense for some of their interests and some of the things they would like to see along those lines. Clearly, we're up against it demographically, and we need to find ways to manage the tax dollars that, that we have. I know you struggle with that, we certainly have a budget vote coming up here shortly, and we want to make sure that we're conscious of that as we look at the options that we would make, as we would recommend coming out at the end of this work. Generally, right now, we see the options falling into one of three categories: repurposing the existing facilities, finding a way to allocate some dollars to upgrade them to allow 21st century learning to be fully implemented into the schools. I know the teachers and the administration are working hard at that now, but the schools, they are, they're 50-year-old schools, as long as someone sits, you can do without a significant capital investment to help change those. So that's one option, or one bucket, if you will. The second bucket is, if Orchard goes away, do you implement a program that's driven by a new?
Central.
I'm sorry, yes.
It's okay.
If Central goes away, do you implement a program that's driven by a new K-4, either individual or consolidated? Quite possibly, the third bucket might be, do we have a program that's driven forward by a new high school, a magnet? We receive a lot of students from outside the district, and that's part of the equation that you all talk about here in your meetings.
And we, and we're also looking at it from a standpoint of what, what drive, what will pull people to the city, not, not just what's best for the schools, but what is best for the city as a whole in their growth. The demographics show that we're going to stay flat or even potentially lose population over the next 10 years for the city, even with all of our growth opportunities that we see. That surprised us a lot, and we spent a lot of time with the demographer only to come away saying, yeah, we don't have any better answers than this guy. He's very bright, very capable. But, but we, we want to look at, at the schools as a, an economic driver for, for the, for the city, and if that's the case, what, what, and it always has been the case here, what do we need to do to be, to remain at or at the, or near the top of the, of the food chain?
One of the hurdles that we crossed, I think, as a task force, was recognizing the difference between housing starts and number of people per household, and that housing starts are great, we certainly have a lot of housing starts, and the population is going up here in South Burlington, but that doesn't necessarily transfer to, or translate to, an increase in the student population, which continues to put pressure on the, the schools and how we move forward with the existing structure, so.
Yeah, what we've, what we've seen in the demographics, and you've probably seen this, is, is that we've dropped from, I think, 2.44 people per household 10 years ago down to 2.19 today. That's a, that's 2,000 or 3,000 people that actually shrunk in terms of households, and yet we have increased our population. So that means we had to have net in, in migration in order to offset just what was happening nat, naturally. That, that continues and is expected to continue into the next 10 years.
And the aging, aging population's not a bad thing, it brings with it jobs and other economic benefits and opportunities. It's just how do we manage that with the charter that we've been given here on the task force to look at the schools and how we might repurpose those and, and put those to use in a way that will support the community needs going forward 10, 20, 30 years out. Couple of the considerations that we'll, we'll put in front of the community to better understand and get some feedback is how important is 21st century learning? How is, how important is the organization of the school? Is, is it important for pre-K to be now moved into the K-5 or K-4 model? Is it a K-4, or does it stay K-5? Is it a 5A model? Those are the types of things that we'll be looking for to better understand in the work that we do in the coming weeks with the, the community. The existing potential, existing and potential inequities. If we replace Central and keep Chamberlain and Orchard, they may not be viewed the same in the community's eyes, though they may have the same square footage and same number of classrooms and the same quality teachers, there's some things that need to be worked through there to make sure that everybody feels a part of the solution that would be recommended. New versus old, class sizes. Do we want 14 children in a class? Do we want 21 children in a class? A lot of that goes into the thinking that will come out of this, and then facility adaptability and, and operating costs. Those are some of the things that we're looking at in challenging the options going forward to figure out which ones we would bring to this board as recommendations the first time around. We're looking for some feedback from you. On the city side, we're considering the city, city center, what that vision means, how that impacts the schools, and there's that offer for Central. That's a key piece of real estate. We understand that's a driver for Central, it's a driver for the city center, it's not just a driver for the city center, but some of the city buildings that may come out of that, the library or city hall, where those opportunities lie for the community. So this is all tied together, and there's a lot of moving pieces that we're trying to navigate.
And we're just coming to the realization, I think in the last meeting, we came to the realization that there's a timing element, too. Not only, you know, we, we're not saying that, that Central necessarily needs to be sold for this price to this person, but we have a TIF district that starts, whether we like it or not, in 2017, and the last money that can be drawn down towards public facilities is in 2023. We have, we have a timeline that we, that, not us, the city has a timeline that we have to fit into if we want to be in, making investments in that area. And so this all has to end up somehow jelling, which it hasn't yet.
Right. In terms of next steps, touched on that briefly in, in the beginning, but we're looking to meet with the community, we'll further filter and refine the options, we'll come back and test these against costs. That's the one area we haven't driven down as deep as we need to yet, and we're getting ready to do that, is to understand the operating costs and the construction costs, again, test the options against that. Once we do that, we'll make some tentative recommendations, look for some community feedback, and then make a, a final recommendation. On or about March 19th, though, that is open for discussion.
You open for questions?
Yeah, that was a lot in 10 minutes.
That was a lot.
I hope I, I hope we got you.
What should we expect, board here should, what should we expect in terms of the scope of the recommendation that you provide us? Will it be a, a recommendation? Will it be choose from the following two, three, four? Will it have costs associated with it? Will it have other salient things that you think matter as a result of the discussion, task force discussions?
Do you want to take this one?
Sure, yeah, yeah, I can, I can take a guess as well as you can. Well, everything we've been doing so far, Frank Locker has been helping us with, by putting estimated numbers on everything. He and, he and Doran, what are your, are doing, the, the architectural side. And so they, they have round numbers, well, they seem to be very specific numbers, but I think they are relatively round numbers that are attached to each and every construction piece that we look at. So I think you'll, what you'll get will have, have numbers associated. What we're trying to get to, I think, with, for, for the first community meeting, is to, is to provide these three buckets, an idea for each of the buckets. If we use our current facilities and, and just rejigger them for, for the way learning should be today, this is how it would look. If we, if we sold Central School and re, and redid a, an elementary style, this is how it would look. And if we, if we approached it from the high school side, this is, this is how it would look. I think that's what we're trying to get to for the community meetings, so that we at least have something to put in front of them that is more manageable, because what we've got in front of us right now is 10 or 12 different approaches with multiple types below them. So there, we might be looking at 25 different options at the moment, if you looked at each and every possibility. And so we're, we've got to get that into a, into a, a reasonable position for the community. What we come to you with at the end, really, we need to hear from you what you want. We could come with all, with, with our best three with numbers attached to it, or we could come with our, and, or we could come with one. I think, no matter what, I expect we'll come with one that we recommend and, and maybe a couple.
Or maybe two. It seems to be lining up is either we sell or don't sell.
Right.
And then if you sell, here's a cascade of options that may play out, and some are going to bubble to the top as more feasible based on bond requirements and sale price of the land or not of the land. based on bond requirements and sale price of the land or not of the land. And then you'll end up with the other cap. I would expect at a minimum you would see two recommendations from the group in the end. And what that ultimately looks like, we're not sure at this point.
I think we all recognize that what David and Kevin were asking for us to do was to give a community opinion of what the best option is. And so I think we need to end up coming to you with one that we recommend. And perhaps another that, and that's probably a good way to say this. We'll present two options, one if it's sold, one if it's not sold. Of those two options that we feel are the best, we'll make a recommendation based on that. And I just picked sold, unsold as more or less an example. But I think you're right. We would present a couple and then make a recommendation, as we've been asked to do.
I guess that I'd like to see in addition to that, I wouldn't want to see all 25. But if there's like a number, a range of alternatives that you looked at, reasonable range, I don't know what the magic number is, and you ruled out five of seven, let's say, that seemed to be kind of top choices, and you just give us the reason why, you know, we looked at this, but this is why this didn't pass muster. I think that would help for our decision point there, to know the thoroughness of what you looked at.
I guess I would suggest that we give you all of the historical information. Because why not? I mean, we will have spent money on architects and everybody else to try to get there. And perhaps, you know, a sentence or two on each one and why we felt where we, you know. And so this is ultimately your decision and the city council's decision. I assume probably more your decision than anybody else's. It's not ours. We're just trying to give you a recommendation, but you're certainly welcome to.
And later on top of that, we could consolidate it to a matrix that says at the bottom makes, here are the five that fell out, and here's why. So you have a summary sheet to go back to, and then all the detail is behind it if you so choose to go back in and look at that.
Can you tell us how you're going to include the community in a broad way?
Great question. We have COB.
COB.
COB, thank you.
COB Associates.
Who is developing a community survey that will be posted and asked for input from the community. We will have a community roundtable, for lack of a better description, or multiple roundtables in the room where there'll be facilitators at the table and various questions or options will be placed on those tables, and they'll be asked for feedback. That feedback will be collected and then used to help inform the options that we have or refine the options that we have. Distill it based on what we hear from the community, do some work internally, and then go back to the community one more time potentially to say, here's what we heard. Did we hear you correctly? This is kind of where we're heading with our recommendation to the board and the city.
This is our concern about the timing, though.
Yeah, it just feels like inevitably, no matter what we, if there's a big issue to discuss, there are people who say, I had no idea you were talking about this. And this is too big of an issue to have that come back to us.
Yeah, one of the things in 2008, we, and some of you were at it and participating, we had administrators were all there, helped co-facilitating and basically helping with the roundtable discussion. I think we had around 145 community members. And we did two of those. We were ecstatic that we had that number. But one of the charges going forward was that where that was a good number for us in a community showing, it really wasn't totally representative of the community. And so that was in part in play why the community survey, you know, was put in this time, to make sure that we are reaching out. Again, I think it is up to us and our due diligence to make sure people are being informed, pushing out, you know, like what went out in the other paper. Thank you, Cory. And Cory's been there. But making sure that people are reading, you know, the information and can go to the website and get the minutes and all of those things. So we need to continue to do that. Our hope is that we don't get there. You know, we don't come to the end. And it's like, you know, a big surprise. So there's going to be, need to be some continued outreach, I think, still.
We've talked about that at the task force level, that part of our, we see part of our responsibility as being reaching out to our friends and family members, community members that we associate with and talk to them about this and make sure that they're thinking about it. And if they can, come to the community meetings, great. And if they can't, go to the website. All the meetings, agendas, and additional demographic information and Frank's studies that were done. All that stuff is on the webpage that they can go and look at and ask questions and hopefully help the process along that way. There's always those that are going to be more involved and those that are going to be less involved. And it's how do we filter up the less involved? Because they still vote on tax issues. They vote on issues of financial importance, and it's important to make sure that they understand what we're trying to do going forward.
One of the things we're trying to do for the task force and their direction is to kind of come up with a one sheet, if we could, around city and school and looking at the opportunities that we're trying to achieve. The option that checks off most of those boxes on the city and the school side around those wanted opportunities, some of which Art and John just talked about, along with kind of cost implications to be within a, you know, a bar or a green band or something of that nature that would be this option, checks off all of the opportunities and falls somewhere within this, you know, impact to taxpayers here. And to be able to provide those or boil those down. Obviously, there's clearly, out of the options that have been shared, there's definitely some that check off all the opportunities but would put the cost band, you know, way, way out. And there's some that don't check off the opportunities, at least from my perspective, and, you know, still don't address some of the financial look forward. So.
If I could, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Diane.
You referred to a potential ballot initiative in June. Can you talk more about what you made about?
I believe, and David certainly jumped in, but I believe part of the goal of the task force and the recommendation that we make is whether or not something happens with Central as it applies to City Center and some of the TIF language that will be included and whether or not projects can move forward based on that. It's important as.
I don't think this is specific about Central as much as it is about the TIF language.
Correct.
Right. The TIF has to be approved, as I understand it, before a certain, February of 17, I think, is the date. And they want to get a vote headed in a direction to approve certain portions of that. And that would start in June, or that vote would be in June of 15, in order to have enough time that if they need to rejigger it and understand things from the community and what they found out and have another vote or even another couple of votes in order to get the TIF fully approved, they have enough time.
That was a city-driven potential ballot.
Yeah, it's a city ballot. If Central School has something to do with it, that's your decision, and that's a different issue.
It really provided a kind of a backwards planning exercise for the task force. So, I mean, again, you may get to March, and it may be where no place. City's got to make some decisions. The hope here is that prior, you know, or around that March timeframe, board and council would be provided with some information by which you could then make a decision on go forward or not or push it back out. So. I'm not sure to ask this, though, but is the city expecting this board to provide anything to them prior to them putting the warning out, which we'll have to vote in May, for a June ballot?
Yeah, I would say if it involves the schools, then they would. I think they would like, I mean, we're doing this in a joint way, so I think there's an overwhelming desire to try to converse about the net.
I'm just worried about artificially having to hurry things up for some purpose.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, we haven't met as frequently as we had been with the leadership change, but we're trying to get back on track with that. But that's something that David and I have tried to stay close to in terms of managing expectations.
Perhaps you can sort that out for us. Because if we have to make a decision mid-May, there's not that much time between mid-March and mid-May.
Well, I have a question. If the timing, if it really is being driven by the offer that's out there right now, because it's the development proposal for City Center, as opposed to just having the next vote on the TIF, whatever that might be, if those are disconnected, you know, it'd be, I mean, are they disconnected, or is it your impression?
They are disconnected because the TIF, as I understand it, funding has to be drawn down by 2017, regardless of whether something is done with Central or not. But the issue with Central is that there may be requests for funds to help accommodate that initial trigger relative to TIF. But Central in and of itself is not a driver on the TIF side.
It can be. If we were to be built, let's just say for the sake of argument that we were building a parking garage to assist in a project that was sitting on Central, that parking garage might be paid for with TIF money. We, so this is, this is, this all does sort of spin around each other. It doesn't necessarily mean they're attached. But one can affect the other, and they are orbiting, so.
Well, I guess.
But I don't think that necessarily, I don't think the June date necessarily is a trigger for you as much as it is for the city. But the June date is a trigger. And getting as much of this information ahead of time. So if the city was clear that after our recommendation, if our recommendation was, under no circumstances would we sell Central and you agreed with it, that would definitely make a difference to the June vote.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I guess I understand.
And so I think that's the point.
Yeah, and another somewhat not in our bailiwick here as a school board on the sale is, you know, I've heard their development, the development proposal that's out there. And I've actually also heard a number of people who have said this is a terrible plan for the Central School property. And, you know, if the city is pushing, trying to push this in part to accommodate this proposal, and that proposal may not even go forward because there could be a lot of opposition, because that's not what we want in our city center, is what I've heard people say. But I guess sale.
That's a great, that's a great point. I had this conversation with a fellow task member earlier today around that exact same topic. And what I, way I tried to lay out the conversation was that the developer is forcing the city's hand to some degree. He's being aggressive. He's got a proposal out there. He's put a dollar sum out there. He's got a website bill. He's taking community input. He's doing all those things as if this is a real project. That's great. The reality is that the plan that has been put out there is not the plan that ultimately, in most instances, would be developed. There's a lot of hurdles that need to go through, whether it's the Planning Commission or the DRB or the city council. There's entities that are going to weigh in on that. So what you see there, I would not expect as the final outcome. There'll be plenty of opportunity for the community and the various city groups to weigh in on that.
If I could add one more thing. In my conversations with Kevin Dorn, this isn't necessarily even the guy that's going to get to do this. This is, this is, this is an opportunity which alongside the TIF is pushing our hand along a little bit, which is not a bad thing. We're all recognizing, okay, we've got to think about this now. But that doesn't mean that in the end we don't go to an RFP for a developer to do something completely different.
So, and that's why I guess I'm kind of getting at is is that option of potentially selling Central not being tied to that offer? That it's kind of an independent question of whether we should sell that for the broader interest of City Center, but more importantly, for our purposes? Although that's very important because we want to see economic development, which presumably will lead to more taxes for schools, et cetera. But our question is really getting rid of that school over the long term. Is it going to be best for the kids?
What the developer, or what the, what some of the development people have told us, not the developer, is that there is a certain size, sort of a mass in terms of acreage that makes a project like this more viable. And right now, we're dealing with about 11 developable acres out of 18 that include wetlands and everything else.
For City Center.
That are part of City Center. And this would add about another 11 acres. And that's, and intricacy of transportation and a lot of other things. And that brings, it brings the project to a level where it may be more stable, more capable. So I think ultimately, the question to us and to you is, is Central, is that school best served in its current location? Can it be served elsewhere as effectively? And is the city better served by using that land?
Coming back to your question there, Martin. Any recommendation that would come out of the task force? If the task force did recommend that Central be sold, a key component of that recommendation would be that the city, or in this instance, the school district, because I believe you own that property, that the school district go out and issue a developer RFP to see what other opportunities there are for that property. Just because we would recommend that we sell it doesn't mean that there's any obligation that it be sold to the Saxon Partners, who has the existing plan out there. We would want the school district to go through that process for the benefit of the community.
I think we all agree on that.
A couple of quick comments. First off, thank you for volunteering for another, I'm sure it's a second full-time job, based on what I've heard. I think a couple of observations I'd have. One is 50 years is way too far out. When we know that we're graduating kids today who will go into jobs that, five years from now, that don't even exist today, for us to try to plan 50 years out with an accurate forecast and what even learning is going to look like is a lot. I know, you know, it's, the goal was to set a longer-term vision, which is fine. I think we all know realistically it's going to be 10 to 15 years that have any hope of being somewhat accurate with decreasing accuracy as you go. The other comment I'd make is, I, not so much agree or disagree, but I think the conversation that just happened here around the sale versus the TIF. I, you know, the conversation about the vision for the South Burlington School District in collaboration with the city, those conversations had been going on well in advance of an offer from Saxon Partners. So to the extent that the offer accelerated some conversations, I think, to your point, it was a good thing. But I think to sell or not sell is less the issue around what do we want our public education system to look like on a going-forward basis? And how can that support taxpayers in the city as well, vice versa? One of the concerns I have when this goes to the community is I think community feedback can largely be affected by the level of information the community has around the options that are presented. So for instance, if it becomes kind of a redistricting conversation, that's going to have a completely different tone than if there's a conversation that says, we can commit to graduating your children from the South Burlington Public School System fluent in two languages with a guarantee that they'll get into one of the top three colleges of their choice with 100% employment and with no college, you know, debt. And/or, we can fix.
Sign off.
Yeah. That was just off the top of my head. And/or, we will keep your tax rate flat for the next five years and still create this new learning system. So somewhere between the service that's being delivered and the improvement on that and/or the, you know, improvement on the tax base and the financial benefit to taxpayers, whether it's weighted one way or the other, it's a cross-section of those two, I think that information is going to be critical to how the community responds. Because I could imagine if it strictly becomes a little bit of a redistricting and you get into the quality of existing schools versus another one, and it becomes kind of territorial from a neighborhood standpoint, that's going to be a really different conversation than you've really made, created an environment where your child will be really competitive in the global environment, and we have some predictability to the tax base, for instance. So I know that's a really difficult part of the scenarios that are being developed. But I think that context is really going to be not only helpful but critical to how community feedback is garnered.
The aspirational nature, as you just described, is the key, and that's, when we talked about 50 years, I don't think anybody on the task force is really thinking that we're planning something for 50 years. What we're, what we're trying to do is to think aspirationally, get people out of their silos, out of their own little tendencies and their personal desires, and look at the broader picture and see what the possibilities are. Certainly, 50 years does have its challenges, given how fast the world moves today, but the idea of looking and being aspirational and how we present that is really what we're trying to gain out of that.
And it's hard getting out of your silos. There is not a night that goes by that we don't have three or four silo conversations.
Well, again, I, I just want to thank both of you for being here. Again, this is a charge that was established by both the Board, School Board and the Council, and I think, you know, the task force is doing a lot of the heavy lifting. It's confusing right now, but I think there's, there's a, we're coming together. So, it's, again, our hope that, you know, this is why the Board and the Council did this, as Elizabeth said earlier, is that we don't get to a point somewhere in the, in the future that the city built a city center or a new library and municipal office and should have said, "Well, oh, and you're needing that, and maybe you should have talked." And again, our hope is, is that we get to whatever that decision point is and say, "We did some good talking and good planning, and we have some reasonable outcomes for the future." And so, I'm thankful for your time and the efforts of the task force, and I appreciate you guys coming in to share with us this evening.
You're welcome. Thanks for the support. Dan's been to a meeting, at least one, two, so open doors, by all means, come on.
We have had quite an audience. I mean, we had upwards of 20 in the audience, so there is some good community followership.
Could we get that list of meetings again?
Sure. Yeah.
Write them down.
Thank you. Thank the task force.
Thank you.
Well done. Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, and that is to consider and approve the school director's line item budget.
Do you have that one? I couldn't find my.
It's in here.
I don't think we've seen that budget. Is it possible to bring it up?
It's in the packet, but.
Well, where in the packet is it, John?
It's in this packet.
Yeah, it's just this. I don't really have it on, but I'll give you.
Can I see that, Diane?
I can get some from that. I may have mine here, John. It's a one-pager. Yeah, it's in your, it should be in your packet.
In this packet?
Is the budget?
It's.
And on the other side, the budget is there.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it.
Yeah.
I don't think I have it.
Boy, you guys.
Yeah, I need it, John.
Pretty much the last thing, probably.
Well, it's not much.
You left it in your packet.
Yeah. Coincidental.
There, there, I put the legal and negotiations in here, too. The policy governance indicates that the Board needs to review their own budget, and we do that in monitoring reports also, but to set the budget level is what we're here for. The legal services is to give you an indication of what changes we've recommended, and I have a little more history, I could put a graph on that. What, the only change really recommended, David and I discussed before, was to recommend a little bit more marketing and advertising money, simply because of what you just heard here, the master planning and visiting. We've been, if you go back 10 years, this budget was a lot higher, and, and it got, it got down to bare bones, which was fine, but there isn't flexibility for professional consulting. For instance, the audit of, of performance evaluations, that was a $3,000 bill that's in here. So, this 2,000 just represents an effort to put a little bit more money in there for flexibility.
So, did the audit, did that audit go into this line item, advertising?
No, no, it went into contractual services.
Right.
But, but we look at what we've been doing with advertising. We had an RFP last year for marketing and, and PR, and, and the rates, it's expensive.
Right.
And so, yeah.
But net-net, you're, you've proposed a budget that's basically at the 2013, a little bit below that level?
Yes.
Yep.
And it's down about 18,000 over prior year, adopted budget?
The grand total.
Yep.
The grand total, right.
Which includes the significant decrease in the negotiations cost.
Yep.
Right.
So, what is the actual, what have we been hitting as far as actual? This is the budget for the last three years, but seems to me that we've been below budget.
We have some years. Last year, we spent $30,000 in fiscal '14. And for, I'm talking about the Board, the Director's line, let's, let's focus on that a little bit.
You mean tw- okay, the total school director line?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, and not the legal part first.
Yeah, the school director, right.
Last year, we spent $30,600.
So, that's 13 to 14?
That's fiscal '12, 13.
12, 13.
Fiscal '12, 13?
Yes.
12, 13.
And then.
So, that was actually a bit over budget.
A bit over, yeah.
In the prior year, or 2004, this report's backwards, I apologize if I'm reading it wrong. The reported number for '14 was $26,000 spent.
Okay, so I take it back that we've been under budget.
We're a little bit over on the director budget.
Well, you know, here's what happened. The, the, the city, on their charges, went through a transition. We weren't getting bills, and, and then all of a sudden, we got some bills in arrears. And that's all taken care of now, so we know what's coming. There could be some savings this year because of our distribution of the budget books. We're, we're going to make copies in-house of those books as people request them.
Oh, is that, is that part of, does that, does that come out of the district, the school director's budget?
It does, yes.
Oh, okay, all right. And that's the bill that we got from the city later?
Right.
Because I was wondering, my question was, what did we get billed from the city?
There's postage for that, we share, and also election expenses that go in here, too.
Okay.
Is the city also going to do it on demand?
Yeah, yes.
So, they're not mailing them out?
No, the idea, what's going to happen is that they're going to, again, this is part of, will be the conversation about the budget book, which we need to begin to solidify. The city will, the city will mail out a postcard that will simply give them a, a place where they, everyone will be informed where the budget book information is. They can have that, or they can check off that I'd like a hard copy, and there'll be a way to return that.
Can they get it electronically?
Or call in, so they can get it mailed to them. All right? So, it's either electronic, or they can say, "Please send it to me." And we give them, and what John indicated is that we've kind of figured that out, that we can print them in-house, looking very similar to what you have, what you have or what we've done, but we can do that kind of on an on-demand basis, and we can do that for the city, and the city obviously will charge them, it will charge them a fee for that.
They'll charge the taxpayer a fee?
No, we'll charge the city, city office, City Municipal.
We'll charge us a fee.
Okay.
No, we're doing the printing.
We'll be doing the printing, so we'll, so, and again, what we hope is that most of them won't request that, right? So, we won't have hundreds of extras.
And it has been online for many years. It's on, in our, the Business Office website, the School Board's website, too.
Again, the tech.
And the city has it.
The software technology to be able to post that up is, you know.
Well, and in the conversations that, that David and I had with Kevin and Pam at the time, it was really, we didn't get the impression that the hard copies were as necessary for all residents. So, we kind of said, you know, and we wanted to make sure we weren't excluding anyone. So, rather than even, you know, for those who can access and choose to access their website, it's available. If they want to mail it back in with a reply card, they can get a hard copy, or if it's easier to just make a phone call to request a hard copy. But the hard copies are being made on demand versus printed at a professional press up front, which did cost quite a bit.
Yeah, no, it could cost savings.
Will there be a quick turnaround time so that people can get them pretty quickly?
Yeah, I mean, that's our, that's our intention, you know, is to make sure.
We have our media services is set as early as next Friday to make the copies. So, yes, it'll be quick.
So, any other questions on the proposed Board budget? I guess, is that what we're calling it, school director and legal services budget?
Yeah.
I don't think our overtime salary is correctly reflected here.
Yeah, yeah, where did that come from? Tell me about this overtime that we get.
Well, there's support for the Board that.
Oh, for, not us.
Not you guys. Would you like to guess what that number would be?
Julie was like, "I've never submitted overtime."
I didn't get an answer the other week either about how much City Councilors are making. Do we know? I think we should get as much.
I'm taking over Rich's role here.
Well, you know, five.
Well, this is the time for you folks to make those recommendations.
Does anyone want to propose a raise? Or a decrease?
No.
Definitely not a decrease.
All right. Unless there's other questions, do I have a motion to approve the recommended budget of $141,307.97 for both the school director and the legal services budgets?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, we'll move on to the discussion and adoption of South Burlington School District FY 2016 budget.
So, we're going to, we're going to walk you through again some, probably for the Board, repetitive information. We do want to point out that there was a fair amount of questions that came from the Board, and so it may be appropriate that some of those get re-asked or discussed as we go through here. Again, I, I want to just reiterate very quickly that, you know, on behalf of the administrators, myself, we do believe that the budget that we're presenting this evening represents the needed staffing and resources to continue to provide the students of South Burlington School District the opportunity to successfully achieve the ends. Again, you've heard this, our multi-tiered systems of support, as we call it, MTSS, our multi-year plan out to year 2020, coupled with the student assessment results, supports our desired resource allocations within the district. As a district, again, we work to ensure that we're meeting the needs while complying with federal and state mandates and working to implement initiatives, initiatives such as the Common Core, Next Gen Science Standards, Personal Learning Plans, and Proficiency-Based Graduations, just to name a few. Our plan, in our plan, we have identified the need to make changes in our student information system and to update some of our technology infrastructure so that it supports both student and staff needs. This budget continues to support the maintaining of facilities. Our Facilities Georgetown Plan, which is now in its seventh year, has allowed us to better understand our current and forecasted needs, and has permitted us to derive suggested strategies to allocate resources. One major area that the Board is well aware of is it working to address our ADA, or Americans with Disability Compliance Act, ability. This budget represents some trending towards some of the upper limits. You'll see some of that data now around some of the classroom allocations. However, also redeploy some of those resources to help create more system-related changes, and we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that. So, without further ado, we'll walk you through some of the, what I'm going to say, repetitive information. Again, I'm very aware that there was questions by the Board that you may want to preface as we go through it. So, we'll, we'll walk you through some of the questions. Sorry, Elizabeth, you going to turn?
Yep. We locate.
This one's a little bit hard to, it's hard to read. It's in your packet also, there are packets available. I think important to note here is that for folks, you know, this is kind of a summation of, of the work, again, important, our draw from the Ed Fund, oops, I gotta be careful here, John, sorry.
Sorry.
I won't do that again. 1.88% on the draw from the Ed Fund, so important that people understand when, we've had some mandates from our governor and others to try to keep that below 3% or at the 3% mark or below. We certainly, the draw, the amount of money that we're pulling from the Ed Fund, the increase proposed for next year in this recommended budget is 1.8, 8, 8, 8.6, right, John? 8.6%, right.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Can we, can we confirm that, I mean, I, I read the letter or one of the notes about the 3% prediction. Are we positive that that means the draw from the Ed Fund as opposed to what the school budgets are supposed to increase?
I mean, before it gets put into the budget book, if that's going to go in the budget book, can we be absolutely sure that that, that that's the case?
Yeah, I mean, I, I certainly, again, what's been the concern is that that draw from the Ed Fund is the biggest, is, is the metric that is measured.
Right.
And so, that's been what's been communicated. John, I don't know anything else to add to?
No, when it's communicated back in November, that's the assumption that people are going to draw from the Ed Fund. It does, as discussions go, well, what's the real change? And that's what you're saying.
Right.
The real change in expenditure is 3.27.
It just seems a little fuzzy, and it seems like it's very easy to understand from even the state, you know, level, that when they say 3%, that they mean budget as opposed to draw from the Ed Fund, but, I mean, if you're comfortable that that's.
There, there's no question that there's confusion. I think when people see overall budget, they see your equalized pupils, you know, there's, there's many areas here where people can be, you know, led astray. So, again, from, from my perspective, obviously, we've been in different places if we have, if we would have a significant change in equalized pupils, which, you know, we've had some, some, some changes over the past years. Many schools, many districts and SUs have had significant changes in equalized, which has been an adverse effect on their draw from the Ed Fund versus their, versus their budget, right?
And we'll confirm as close as we can with the State Tax Commissioner for, for the budget recap, so we know.
So, moving on, again, you see revenues up. That's in part, as we've heard before, around some of our increased tuition numbers coming from the islands, and again, we recognize that volatility, but that's up 8.77. Our overall budget when combined is up 3.27. Actually, we, we need to make a slight change in here based on your decision this evening, correct, John?
We need to discuss it.
And so, whether, right.
Because the revenue from the islands in Grand Isle was based on a conservative estimate that has been pointed out, and the actual charge we're going to, we just approved is higher.
So.
So.
Will we have the working sheet?
Yeah, we'll have that, yep. So, we'll come to that and.
So, you, you just need to park that, but that, that number, if the Board so desires to apply that, then that would change that, some of that revenue, and would change that total amount of 3.27.
The 3.27 would remain the same, but it would affect the tax rate.
Yeah. So, again, that's, that's, that's where we are. This is the budget worksheet. John, why don't you walk them through any of that change? Again, that's pretty consistent with what you've seen before. This is number four, this is not, this is, again, we, we removed the, the component of our reduction of that 191. We're being really clear here around, this is the recommended budget. We obviously made some decisions to get to that, to get to this point, but again, this is the, the more specific information around that. This is where you can see our equalized pupils, up 35 students or an increase of 1.48. Again, that's a major driver. You see all of the same numbers that you saw before. You see the impact on, on our taxpayers, and we did add, actually, one of the Board members suggested, you know, that some similarities with the city around what that might be, again, annually, and also what that would look like on a monthly increase to a homeowner of a $330,000 home or a condo. So, we've broken that down as well, kind of giving some people some additional information.
And this, before income sensitivity is in red, just to remind us that when we put information out, we'll have, we'll have a real number to publish and some estimates on what that means for people who pay on income versus people who pay on the value of their home.
And, and that is changing this year, correct?
It is, yes.
So, we'll have the updated changes?
The updated changes come the week before the election, so we have to, we do our best estimate that, and, and we'll, we'll focus on that a little more than we have.
Because I, I mean, I think that has been a concern, that, I think people, folks that might pay their property tax based on income sensitivity, I'm not sure if there's been communication from the state on how that's changing, and I'm not sure, we even really know specifically, but, you know, I do think some folks have looked at the budget relative to their past eligibility for income sensitivity, and it could, I don't know if there's going to be a big sticker shock or... And I'm not sure we even really know specifically, but, you know, I do think some folks have looked at the budget relative to their past eligibility for income sensitivity, and it could, I don't know if there's gonna be a big sticker shock or?
We don't know either.
Yeah.
I think people, people understand what we're talking about, the income sensitivity is going up, which means people will have to pay more of the, of the actual reflected taxpayer.
I just haven't seen anything that says how material that changes.
So just as a benchmark, the City Burlington School District in Burlington passed their budget on Monday. They've included the income sensitivity rate for a fifty thousand dollar income in what they, in what they reported.
Yeah, so they may be using the previous year.
I don't know what they used, I'm just saying that's.
Yeah, that'd be my, that'd be my guess.
They did, they did have a year-to-year change.
Yeah.
But wasn't, there, there was a recommendation in the tax commissioner's letter of raising that rate, so we can assume that that's?
Yeah, we can do a calculation.
It's just not final, is the.
Right. That might be, that might be a good idea to include that as another scenario based on the tax commissioner's recommendation.
We should certainly do that.
At least it gives some level of sensitivity.
Well, that's what's used for the other parameters, is the tax, is the tax commissioner's recommendation.
So again, this sheet, we'll come back to, we'll talk a little bit more about. Again, this, this is a very, very busy sheet for you, but again, I, I want to just provide this to you, and it's one of the many tools, and I haven't been so great about sharing the tools that I've been using with my staff around allocated resources. We are fortunate, and we've made improvements, we're still not where we want to be around data, but we do have an ongoing server that continues to provide us real-time updated information that we can use. So currently, what I'm, I just want to point this out to you, I don't necessarily, you know, answer any questions you have, but what this is, is it has projected, and John, if you scroll down, it's current year and then previous year. And so just looking at those three years, or those years over time around enrollment, free and reduced, our free and reduced population percentages by school, there is what we call a poverty addition. Again, essentially, it's a calculation that is used around the twenty, point two five percent addition for individuals in poverty that allows to determine a weighted that we, that we use, but we use that against our, our actual number of total pupils as well. But it also breaks down some staffing, and in here you can see, you know, some of the changes that are, that are happening or that we're proposing to happen. Again, this is in part in play to what I've said earlier, but it's the data that backs it up. Again, what you're gonna, I'll give you the quick summary across the board. There's slight, slight downward actual enrollment trends across the board. We have a slight increase in FHTMS. Others are, Central is, is slight downward, but when weighted together, we have a little increase in equalized pupils. And again, this, from my perspective, supports what we're trying to do around fairly flat increases in the classroom, but putting resources to support some of the things that you've heard about at the high school that I alluded to in my letter, PLP, proficiency-based graduation, Next Gen Science Standards, and at the elementary, resources to help all teachers around things, for instance, in math, in the math area, so that we can make some significant changes that way. As opposed to, we have many areas, and we, and you'll see in, in a bit, you'll see where the class sizes are, we have many that are on the cusp, where they could probably benefit from another teacher, but the choice within this budget is to try to redeploy some resources within the school to help and support the classroom teachers so that they can learn what we would say, some of our tier-one best improved practices in the classroom. So there's math coach that you've heard about to help actually that happen, and so we have some pretty good track record on that.
So. When that chart, David says percent in the middle.
Yep.
Chart, it says projected change from current year, thirty, oh, it's thirty-four point six seven.
Yeah, so that, that was, that was the change from, from the previous year, or one point four seven.
But you said every school is actually down.
Well, not, not every, so Central School, if you go between projected, current, and previous, essentially, you've got, across the board, Central School projected is equal, their, their current year was down from the previous year. Chamberlains slight down, slight down current year from the previous year. Orchard slight down, they were up in the past current, in the current year. Tuttle, because of that larger class size, they're up in their projected year, down the current year from the previous. So again, and, and when I say down, they're, they're very slight, but yet equalized is slight up, which means we have a, a much more diverse, we're having a more diverse population come in that we're needing to be conscious around how we support. So, anyway, that's, that's this. I, I put it up here not to make you go crazy, but that this is part of the data that we have used to, to make those decisions around what's going on with the administrators and, and, you know, certainly central office as we look at resourcing. Julie, looks like you had a question.
No, I'm good.
Okay. This, this does a lot of the same thing, it, it pulls it all together, it shows you a little bit of our resourcing across the board. You see some of our, our core classroom allocations, which we're gonna, I'm gonna show you an elementary chart. And so there's a little upward trend with some of these around some of our, our, our average class sizes with some of the slight reduction in, in population. But again, this kind of wraps it all together and shows you some of those changes that, that we are doing. Again, part of what we've done is we've made some changes, Joanne's actually here tonight as well, but we've made some changes to be really, we've reduced some of our parent educator support, and we've, we've made some increases to the special ed area, but that's been actually in a, in a cost-benefit arena. We do think that that's important. Joanne puts a lot of time into making sure that the allocated resources best supports the classroom instruction, and she has some methodology that she uses around that. Joanne, I don't know if you wanted to comment a little bit about the resourcing?
Well, as far as the numbers that count, resources, I think I talked to you guys about this last year, but Michael G. and Greco have done research on just density, so special educator density in buildings, because it's there, the work is, goes beyond sort of writing the IEP and just dealing with a student with an IEP. It really goes beyond, it, it goes into supporting all the students in the building. So we use those density numbers to really look to make sure that each building has a proper level of support staff through special ed to support all the students. And then we also are looking at parent educators to make sure that we don't have, the tendency is, I think, in Vermont, to have many special educator, many parent educators. We look to make sure that we have that ratio, we're about one parent educator to every four students who are identified. And so we're looking to make sure that that's pretty equitable across the buildings, so that we're really using our resources well. So those are some of the, that's some of the data that I collect from year to year.
So has that analysis resulted in any significant changes in the way resources are allocated or in total issue?
Yes, because we are reducing some parent educators in a couple of the buildings and using that, using those, that resource to increase the number of special educators that we need to do the work that we need to do in those buildings to keep that density at the right places.
So again, you, you see, there's, there's a lot of information, it, it does pull together for you around, you know, around our current. I would like to go to the, the next one, which is specific, and again, part of this is also looking at, you know, versus our, our current actual, our projected, obviously, I've taken it out even one more year, but that's neither here nor there at this point. This is in part, we, we did use the, the demographers' data for projected. It's a little tricky based on tuition. He, he does have, he did have some feedback and recommendations based on the tuition, so we've applied that in there, it's not significant in change, but we've looked at that, and, and I think important, we, we also looked at, you know, kind of these core, core teacher drivers at both the high school and the middle school, and are trying to really be mindful of those ratios in, in light of some of the things that are, are upcoming for them. I, I would say that I'm a little bit concerned around the EQS standards that are out there and how we're gonna work towards that end. So at this point, there's not, there's no add to the high school, it's, it's hold firm. Even though their enrollment's dropping slightly, you can see with the, with, with the percentages here, some of those changes. And then the last page is, is back to the elementary classroom, and again.
Can you back up, back up?
Sure.
Is it students per core teacher, is that the, the standard or measurement that you hear about when you hear student to teacher ratio? I thought that would include all teachers.
So in the, in the previous slides, you'll see it rolled up more total FTE. This is in, in the core area, which is one of the, one of the areas that we believe is important around that class size, similar to this, Martin, that next slide is the core teacher in the, in the elementary school. So we look at the core, who's delivering the instruction, the most, the largest portion of the day, similar to what you see on the next slide, which is the classroom teacher at the K-five level.
But I guess I'm, I'm also trying to compare apples to apples to some extent. And you hear statewide that a big issue is our staff, our student to staff and student to teacher ratio. I know student to teachers are something around seven or eight or whatever, and this makes it look like we're doing great, but I don't think we're comparing the same thing.
No, so core, core would be different than all licensed teachers in the building, and in the data, you can get to, you can get to that.
It's at the top line, district, all teachers, eleven point one.
Where am I looking at?
On the first, on, on page seven.
Yeah, page seven.
Oh, is that just the district?
Yeah, so they're, they're total on the bottom of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
You'd have to do the math.
But I can, I can do division on my calculator, but where's, where's my denominator and denominator?
Yeah.
So all the teachers are on that page seven.
A total line, yeah.
For each, for each building.
So, well, again, this is where it varies. So all teachers, two thirty-seven.
Right, okay.
Could be divided then by your total pupils, you know, two, 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 two nine-nine, and our weighted pupils, which is factors in that. So, you know, you could, you can do it that way.
Well, I mean, it's, if that's what, if that's the standard that, that people may compare us to.
Yeah, and I will tell you that it, it does vary. This is one of the issues that I have had, and again, how it gets represented, if it's teachers, then does it include all staff? All staff.
What does the state do?
Well, again, they do, there's a variety of things that have been reported, they have not necessarily been consistent.
Okay.
Is it all licensed teachers and administrators? What is it, you know, how, what is the, what are the other factors that they pull in? It has varied from year to year. So.
Well, we're at nine point seven, which is a couple above the state average.
Yeah.
When you're talking all, all teachers.
So let me, let me go to.
Thank you.
I'm happy to come back to that, Martin. Let me go to the last page. Again, we have our current actuals in this, in this, in this proposed budget. What I'm presenting, obviously, is there's a change in, in the number of teachers.
In most states.
Rick Markoff, from nineteen to eighteen. And again, I, I would tell you that, yes, the class size average is going up. Do I have concerns? I do, I do across the board with volatility. Obviously, one less teacher at Chamberlain, the class size average is seventeen and a half. Definitely, you know, there's maybe some concerns, but it's within, I think, an appropriate level, particularly providing some of the supports that we're trying to provide at the school level. And so it's not one teacher that comes in and then lessons, it's a, it's a support person, in this carry, a math coach, that comes in and perform, and supports all. We've seen good results in, in this area with the math coach at Chamberlain, and we believe this is a positive step for us moving the district forward, particularly in light of the Common Core and some of the things that are coming up. And the last, the last, obviously, Orchard. Orchard is staying the same, again, with their enrollment, they are one that are seeing slight increases across the board, so their enrollments are, their projections are where they are at. And then the final is the district rollup. You can see that we're, we're proposing a slight increase on the, on the, on the overall number of students of going from eighteen to eighteen point six, and you can see the trend over time. So I don't know what other questions you have, there is an awful lot of data in here. Again, mine, I have kind of marked, gone through, and again, this has been mine, kind of working copy, that's ups and downs and trends.
So do we, do we have anything that trends out in three years of what our enrollment has been versus our staffing level?
Yep. Yeah, this, you know, one of, one of these, the first sheet actually, all tied together, we'll do that for you.
Where, where was that?
Well, I don't, I didn't, I didn't aggregate it all together, Elizabeth, but obviously, from, from the first sheet of projected, current, and previous, that enrollment trend. I, I haven't pulled it all together, you, you can see, you can see it that way. What I've kind of done is, you know, for instance, as I said, in, in enrollment specifically, there has been, like, at Central, their enrollment from current year to projected is equal, three sixty-two, three six.
I'm just trying to get an aggregated number. The way that, the way the state is looking at the fact that enrollment's down, what, what is it, like, thirty thousand students and?
Twenty, twenty thousand or something.
Something to that effect, and staffing has been.
I believe, I believe it's seated students that they're talking about.
And that staffing is basically flat.
Right.
What, do we have a similar top-level trend for South Burlington?
We are, we are not seeing the same downward trend on seated students. We have a slight downward, many are seeing a significant downward trend in equalized pupils. So we're, we're, I'm gonna say, very slight downward on enrollment, seated.
Could you guess what the percentage is, your slight downward?
I think we're, we're less than, actually, I can tell you that.
It's been just under one percent a year for the last ten years.
Right, and I think we're smaller than that this year, so.
Actually, I put together a quarter of that data, I don't know if it's been made available.
So, so our.
Okay.
So our enrollment, I'm gonna say we're like twenty-two students less than we were the year before. When you factor in weighted, we're about equal, and then when you factor in equalized, we're, we're up. Yeah.
And what about staffing?
And staffing, we're right at where we were about last year, yeah.
So I know one of the questions I brought up last week was around, it looked like there were four FTE adds.
So this is a good place to go into your questions, specifically, I think, on your second page, concerning the four to FTEs. So we've broken those down for you folks on that, and it kind of walks you through the addition of the point two FTE that Joanne talked about in special education. Teacher, and a teacher at Rick Markoff, that was that point two, after reducing the three paras. So again, it kind of walks you through the adds, the puts and takes here around that.
Well, I think, yeah, I think my struggle with this is there's a lot of little puts and takes, but to net out four FTEs, that means a lot more puts and takes. So are there, are there some full-time positions? It looks like there's one full-time position in technology education.
Correct.
That's a net add, and one and a half FTEs for math coaches.
But, but there's a reduction of two, I mean, Elizabeth, it's, it's, let's see, it's a total addition of three point six FTEs and a reduction of two point eight FTEs, meaning a point eight FTE increase from last year's staff.
Are you looking at budgeted versus actual?
Because remember, we did add some FTEs over the course of last year that we approved to get up to two hundred and thirty-three point nine five.
And that's that very last.
Well, it was the chart we had last week, and it looked like there was a net add of four FTEs when you looked at the absolute numbers, and, and that included any offsets.
Yeah, I was comparing.
I'd have to pull out, I don't, actually, I don't have.
I, I use the same chart, Elizabeth, to do this, this figuring, just, just to be clear, because, again, you know, it was the reductions, it's two elementary schools, a point eight special ed, and now, I'm not counting the para, which is money, you know, offset, well offsets the point two increase in the, in the special ed, the two point twos. But the FTEs of teaching staff is a point eight add from last year's.
What about total head, I was looking at total head count, total FTEs. What about total head, I was looking at total head count, total FTEs.
I can wait. At the end of, at the end of the answer to the questions.
Right.
The first full paragraph on the second page, it's page three of the question. Talks about, these are teacher positions were added in the staff summary. And what, what happens is you do a summary when the budget's being produced. And at the point in time we did the budget, it was two hundred and thirty point four six FTEs. And that ties to the number you saw last week. But we went back and what happened in fifteen, not in sixteen, not as in sixteen, but what was happened with additions in fifteen to get to the point of four new FTEs. And so, a teacher at Orchard was added from the contingency. That wasn't included in the total last year. We also had money for a five oh four coordinator in the budget in contingency. But it was, it was tied to grants. And what happened was, we added a half-time five oh four coordinator. So the money was in the budget, but the count wasn't in the total. It's similar to a position that David's talking about. He had twenty-five thousand dollars added last week for a position, that's not in the counts.
So I, I, I feel like I'm not asking this question very elegantly. So this shows two thousand and fifteen budgeted versus actual, we're up about four FTEs. And this is teaching only. So if I look at the projected fifteen, sixteen staff FTEs on page seven, it shows two hundred and thirty-seven teachers, which would imply we're up another four. And that's on teaching alone. Well, three to four, I'm not doing, I'm just rounding the math here. Yeah, three.
Three point zero.
So is that the contingency added, all of those contingency people that were hired within the year?
Well, that should show up in the two fifteen actual. If, if they were all hired, they're, they are in this two thirty-three nine seven.
I think he's saying that they aren't in that number, aren't you, John?
No, well, that's the actual, that's the actual count.
Yeah, that's the actual.
Two thirty-three ninety-seven includes these.
So how do you get to two thirty-seven on page seven?
Right.
Say again?
Of the, of the PowerPoint, yeah. On page seven.
Today's page seven?
Yes. The staff FTE projected fifteen, sixteen grid.
Which says all teachers, two thirty-seven.
And I guess, do we have the comparable information for the other two categories of support staff? And, uh. What's, what's that second category?
It says, that's special ed.
Special ed and ELL.
And English language learners.
Huh, let's see. That can't be right.
That can't be.
I mean, are they, is that a subset of here?
That, that can't be right, you're right. We're not reading it right, I think.
Yeah, I, I don't think I'm reading that FT, no special ed or ELL column accurately. There's a hundred and eighty-nine there of FTEs versus two thirty-seven all teachers and two oh six support staff.
Yep.
So I don't.
So your question is?
How the two thirty-seven teachers compares to the fifteen, two thousand and fifteen actual count of two thirty-three point nine seven?
FTEs.
FTEs. And I guess I'd like the comparable data on other staff subgroups. So there's sort of a net FTE number for the district.
Part of the support staff doesn't necessarily break out as the FTEs, you know? Because not all of them are FTEs, some of them are, you know, resources or contracted money. So it doesn't all break out that way.
Well, however, however it breaks out, what's the trend? Is that number up or down?
So, I mean, is it that we have three more teachers, but we have quite a few less paras? Is that where the bounce, where it bounces out now?
So what I, what I would say. Yeah, what I would say is you need to go from, you need to go from our budget data. It's likely that this cross-check on this sheet isn't, isn't, isn't right. And so I can confirm that for you. That two thirty-seven, these numbers may not be tying correctly to the information that we provided in the budget information. So, I know that this, your write-up and your questions are correct. In what was, what we budgeted and then what we added. And that does tie out. It's not tying out, at least I'm not able to explain the tie-out on this data. So I would need to just check that.
So if, if this is, help me a little bit. So if this is the two thousand and fifteen, in the questions, the two thirty point four six FTEs. Where is the budgeted sixteen figure? Aren't we budgeting for sixteen?
Right, so you, what you've seen in the proposed was the sixteen. So giving you kind of a benchmark on the.
Okay.
Am I saying that right, John?
So my understanding that would be then two thirty-three point nine seven plus the point eight?
Right, which is.
Total add. That would be the directly correct number. I can't explain the two thirty-seven. But if you looked at the fifteen, the real count wasn't two thirty forty-six, it was two thirty-three ninety-seven. And if you take the professional staff changes, it's an add of point eight to that.
That's the net.
That's the net.
Yeah.
So, I mean, most importantly, the budget that we've developed has taken our cohort of teachers. It's made the changes from our cohort as recommended. That's, that's what ties to the budget. I'm a little bit leery of the tie here, and I'll check on the, on the two thirty-seven for you. But I much more trust our FTE allocations that we've provided in the budget as a result of the cohort change and then our reductions from that, so.
So based on what you're saying, we're actually up four point three FTEs for, for?
Over budget.
Over budget.
That, that would be, that would be correct.
Okay.
I mean, part, part of the, the, the issue is if you go from budget to budget, we made, there was, there were some changes that are made. So, as John said earlier, we had some added allocated resources, which I communicated to the board out of contingency. It wouldn't be right for us to go from just the budget, go from actual. It does get a little confusing.
Okay.
Around what was previously budgeted or put, or put in people in the, in the budget books of the past.
I have a question about the, and I appreciate the detailed chart you gave us last week on the pluses and minuses of the staff. But one of the things I'd like to understand is what that means. It seems to me that we're taking away classroom teachers, but we're adding specialized skills that aren't dedicated to a class, but are dedicated perhaps to a school or to a grade level or something like that.
Right.
Is that a trend that's going to continue? Is that driven by Common Core? That's not the way we used to do business.
Well, I, I, it's not, I, I would say it's not a permanent trend. It's based on enrollment. And I certainly want to be cognizant of class size. It's not like I want to say, let the class sizes grow or go beyond what, what we have for recommendations and desired, um, desired numbers as depicted on the, our EQS standards, et cetera, and your own policies and our own contracts. But that said, I also know that we need to embed continued improved practices in the classroom as we get additional mandated requirements. So, obviously, when we onboard a new teacher, it's important that we are getting the best qualified individual. It's also important that we have embedded professional development. And we have individuals within the school that can help support quality in what we call tier ones, tier one instruction, right? So if I were to just say, we're gonna put one more teacher to Central or, or to Chamberlain, class size may go down. But if we're not addressing the overall, you know, the overall issue here of continued improvement with some of the mandates coming along, then, then that'd be true. Now, if, if enrollment was going up, I would need, I would likely say, I can't have, I probably can't have both, right? I gotta put some resources to classroom teacher, and we're gonna have to figure out how to do it district-wide. So this enrollment projection provided the opportunity to make a slight reduction of two teachers in the classroom at the elementary particularly, but repurpose them in a way that's gonna help us move forward based on our goals.
So will it be those teachers that become the math, math coaches?
Those teachers.
Those teachers.
Probably not.
No.
Probably not, right? So my question then becomes, is the direction we're go, I mean, and.
I mean, I would say no, but not.
It's an important discussion, and I'm not sure how relevant it is to the budget, but I want to just put it out there. And that is that the trend I'm worried is happening is that through the change in the requirements that are placed upon us upfront, or things like Common Core, Next Generation Science, are they driving us to a different way of having to deliver education that puts the skills of our cohort at risk? In other words, people were trained to deliver a different product than we're expected to deliver today.
So let, let me, let me, and then I'll let you weigh in. So, certainly, our teachers that are coming out of the, their licensing programs have definitely received significant added training in what we would say that future, right? That Common Core, those more specific math skills, there's much, many more requirements that are coming. That said, we do think that there is an upward trend in what we're gonna say diversifying the, the level of knowledge that a, that a elementary classroom teacher needs, from science to math, language arts, et cetera. Much more diverse. And we know that it's getting harder and harder for them to be the expert in all. So at this point, what we believe is important is that we continue to ensure that good skills are there. And we look at ways, and the principals are at, you know, they're, they're able to say, how could I do this differently? And in fact, we're doing that at, at a couple of our schools where classroom teacher X is the science and math, and the other teacher's is language arts, right? And social studies at the elementary level. So I think the trend, to answer your point, is gonna be more to that, to that domain, where you're gonna find a classroom teacher who has expertise in math, science, somebody in the others. Similar to what we do in some of our core areas at the middle and the high school. Would be my guess, as we, as we continue to move forward. And again, we have examples of that happening now. So, with the board desire, I mean, you may want to now go to your, your revenue sheet, and you may want to do that adjustment if you wanted to, or have that conversation on tuition, and see what then the total budget sheet might look like for you as a relook.
While we're going there, can I ask a somewhat unrelated question? But I had a chance to listen to Secretary Holcomb today, and she was saying that the achievement gap, two-thirds of the achievement gap could be addressed by providing after-school and summer programs for kids that, that lose a lot during, from a continuity standpoint. And I know we've, we've invested quite a bit in the after-school program in terms of access and content. What, what do we have in the budget for summer?
So it's, it's great that I have both Joanne and Stuart here, because they worked hard based on a direction that we took last year. We, uh, summer services for, for children that are, that have it in their IEPs is not overly exciting for students to come. And what I asked them to do is to come up with a more innovative way, working with Lee Lamphier and Schools Out. And what they ran last year created a level of excitement for kids, all kids, whether they were just in the program or they were in need of services, to come to the Schools Out program, to be part of that community and also receive their services. And we had immense participation, and we had great, great outcomes and results. So, I'd like to see that continue. That's not something that other people have been doing, and I do think that we have the opportunity to grow that. But as far as resources, future, you know, Joanne or Stuart, you want to comment on where we're at with that?
Well, I'll go first a little bit with the middle school. Actually, we used to do an elementary and middle school summer school program paid for through Title I funds. And our Title I funds, due to No Trial Left Behind, sixty-six thousand dollars of our Title I funds goes to individual tutoring under the SES program. So that made it virtually impossible to run a full elementary summer school. So we did run a middle school summer school last year, the same way that we have for years, that we've increased some of our enrollment. We had about forty-five students who participated last year. And for our ELL students, we did a partnership with Parks and Rec. And so those students came to Parks and Rec, these were elementary students for ELL. The middle school students are part of this program. But we provided tutoring where kids were in Parks and Rec all day. And during a two-hour block, they got a little pull-out instruction, direct tutoring. So that's what we did for elementary ELL kids and what we did for middle school kids. For elementary students.
And for our kids with special needs, we did what David was talking about, parted, partnered with Schools Out for the summer. And I'm, I'm in conversations with Lee right now about how we can look at after-school programs to do the same. It would be sort of a, for me, a shifting of resources. So having people, instead of working during the day, they might be working after-school to work in those programs. So we haven't put any fun, any money in the budget around that, but we're trying to look creatively about what we can do with the FTEs in the budget.
Well, and I was impressed with the, the research that supports that. Two-thirds of that achievement gap could be addressed through those two programs, which I think we have a pretty nice offering there. And does that, I mean, if you're gonna prioritize things, it sounds like you, you'd be well-served to prioritize those two over a smattering of a lot of other things.
Right, so.
To clarify though, that's only for students eligible for ESY, so.
For the elementary.
Right, right.
Not for the middle.
And she's probably talking, I mean, our achievement gap is really around kids with poverty and with disabilities. So those are the kids that we really want to address.
Right.
You know, and Lee and I also worked on making sure that we can get information to parents around subsidies for participation in those things. It's, so, it's a really good question, though.
Right, and Lee has changed his program, as he reported to you, his summer program with embedded reading, with embedded math, into the program for the kids who are participating. And since we're quoting the, you know, the Secretary of Ed, I mean, I did include in your packet her quote about, you know, it's not enough to be a good teacher, you need instructional coaches, to share, those are those math coaches that we're talking about. And where we have had that in place, the only math coach we really have full-time to a building is in Chamberlain. And you know, Dan has pointed out, that their poverty data trends way above, you know, the achievement for everybody else. And that's kind of where we're looking. And this is, you know, I, I want to be honest, if, if money was not an object, I'd be looking for a full-time math coach in every building, all five. But we're prioritizing where we really think the elementary people, because they're not content-trained in the same way. You know, you're a generalist. But the programs, Common Core, the science programs, they are requiring a higher level of knowledge that a lot of people didn't get in school. And with the literacy support, we've had really good success. Our literacy scores are some of the best in the States statewide. And it's time to really, it's math that we were identified with when there was, not everybody was identified for everything. Math is the area we really need to be focusing on.
So just to close the, the school, that, that achievement gap piece, I mean, we, we are definitely on it in, in, in both during school time and looking at after-school time. And I think the, the after-school program is a, is a really important piece. Some of our preschool initiative is certainly a big part of that, too, is to help kids be successful when they, when they come into our program. So, thanks for, thanks for mentioning that.
I just have a question, are those Title I funds gone forever that popularized? Could they ever be available again for, for elementarying?
For elementary summer school, not unless there's a real change in, in the, in the way that things are trending. And in fact, i- if anything, the stress on those, you know, those funds keep going down, the stress on those funds keep, keep going up. Now, it'll be interesting to see, I mean, I, I don't want to speculate, you know, supposedly the new Republican, you know, this, No Trial Left Behind is four years out of date from when it was supposed to be reauthorized. And there's never been any agreement. And, you know, we may see a reauthorization, and I don't know what that reauthorization will look like. In the last Congress, there was one that came out of the House, didn't get, you know, Muscat, which had an amendment that our Title I funds would go to vouchers for students to go to other schools. So, who knows?
The volatility is alive and well in, in that area, unfortunately for us. But we're, we're, again, doing the best we can with that. So, I want to, I want to bring you back up to here, unless there's other questions. But if you desire to make a change here, this, this is the sheet that we provided. This is the same sheet that you saw earlier, but the revenue, we haven't, we haven't done that revenue or interactive change that John has up here.
So David, we, one question. On the, on the questions, when we taught, we asked about substitutes.
Yeah.
It said, that you said you've asked. It said, that you said you've asked for a more detailed review, and you'll provide the summary.
I, I'm happy to do that. I'm not prepared to do it. I will tell you that Karen has worked really since, I don't know, she's been on it probably a month. And so disaggregating the data is what, and then I have, I have some of her work that I could certainly share with you. But it's really looking at kind of the trend data over time, what's happening. And I think to, to some of the board's point last time, you know, I'd like to say, what can we be doing differently? You know, number one, tracking, supporting, is there, are there different things that we can do? Is it related to care, childcare, adult care? You know, how can we understand this? Number one, is the trend going up? It certainly feels that way. If it is, where? And what might we be able to do, if anything? And I, I don't want to necessarily guarantee that I can if it's all qualifying, qualifying conditions that are eligible. There's not much I can do. But again, I'm not there yet. And again, we've, we've done some things as a result of last year around looking at a more automated system that helps us keep track of and ensure, you know, kind of the equality, which is the ASOP program that's, we're, we're still implementing. Some are using it, but we're looking, we're still rolling that out as well as, as this, as this work on tracking it. I think this will also inform contractual discussions. If the data's here or there, it may, we'll be back to you kind of with our contractual review, as I've said, say, I think we've got to make some changes or, or not. And that could be part of negotiations if we're really out of whack there. So anyway. So John, the amount, the amount of money likely to be additionally generated from the islands as a result of the tuition announcement change?
Well, there's two things. One of the questions was, you're conservative, and I, and we are.
I, I said that. I like that about you, John. I just wanted to be sure we were counting what we should be counting.
Two ways, the, the kids that are coming in, the number of kids will vary. We know twenty are leaving. We've had reports of great success with our outreach. The demographer says a hundred and twenty-six kids. I'm using a hundred and twenty-three for next year. Demographer, I guess that's what it is.
How do, how do you get to your number? I guess that's what I want to know.
I, I look to see what our guidance person says looks, for sure, we know that twenty are leaving from, from the district's communitively. Are, are we going to replace those seniors with freshmen? The likelihood is yes. Do we know how many? No. The likelihood is there'd be a few more. And that, once again, that bore it out for three more, and three times fifteen thousand's a lot of money.
We, we graduate two Georgia students. Our, our trend average has been around eighteen for the other three years, other two years. So we, and we think the incoming freshman class, conservatively, you know, is going to be probably in that area. So we, we've been conservative on that number and not put it up to eighteen, but put it at ten. So we did, and again, this is part of the work of the board, too, that we have an outreach person, not a teacher, but a, a guidance person who's helped us with some of that outreach with the islands, going to those nights, et cetera. Patrick, I know, along with Deb Beretta, the outreach person was up at Georgia at that high school fair. And, you know, they, they think there's a, a significant interest in that, in that graduating grade class to come. So some of that's that volatility that, again, John's being conservative. I think we're right, probably should keep that in that conservative arena and make your adjustments.
Well, for the number of kids, that's what I'd recommend. The choice could be anything, but that's what I recommend. The other is the rate per, per student, which we just set. So we could increase our revenue estimate, assuming that our enrollment's flat. And, and the, the increase in revenue was about six hundred bucks per kid, so it winds up being sixty-six thousand dollars.
Let's look at that sensitivity if we add that into the revenue line.
Sure. So if we, we know that our, our change right now is two point nine two cents, and we add sixty-six thousand dollars in here, it goes down to two point six one cents in a one point six two tax increase.
So that's ten dollars on the average.
So on a, and, yeah, it's ten dollars on a typical home. And based on, based on the, what the action was, that's what I would recommend. You do get, you do get in, there are kids who are coming here, and in the last minute, they'll go to Colchester or someplace.
How many of those do you normally get, the ones that pull out? Is there an average?
Last couple of years, the trend's been more surprises in than out. But it's, it's, the trend's interesting. It goes up and down. And Patrick talks a lot about what, what some of the things happened that were, that caused those.
Last couple of years, we've, we've been, we, you know, we've been in that positive side.
And this recommendation doesn't take out the conservatism associated with the sheer numbers either.
That's correct.
Right. So that's one change. And then there's other changes to expenditures that the board.
So one of, one of the things that I have in this budget, and again, it's in contingency, is that twenty-five thousand dollars. And so the board may want to poke at me a little bit more about this. But I mean, the, my desire here is, and I will come back with a delineated plan, but I feel the need right now to coordinate and better utilize and better support mindfulness, We All Belong, mentorship, communications in general, and to have a position individual. And it would likely result in reductions in some of those areas. I don't know exactly how much I'll need, but I know that it would be an individual that would help oversee those and create some conduit, conduit between them, as well as perhaps some administrative support that would be needed. Currently, we have people in each one of these areas, with the exception of We All Belong. I have some people behind each of those. So I do want to be sensitive to, to a recommendation and change like this. But I see absolutely the need to pull some of these things together. I feel that it would be a much improved process. We have good work going on, but we're fragmented in where, in where we're all trying to go to support all students. And that's part of what the twenty-five thousand dollars would go towards to support that. So you, you could poke at that, you could reduce that a little bit and, and allow me to, you know, to go from, you know, from whatever you so decide. Again, twenty-five thousand dollars put with some of those other resources. And again, there's not a lot in mentorship or mindfulness, but again, it was a step to begin to move in a, in a more coordinated way.
So any decision about that would have to come back to the board, anyway?
Yeah, I, I, I would bring it back to the board. I'm telling you here that I would bring it back. It would be, it could be a delineated position. It could be communication and other program, you know, director, you know, to work on communication, obviously of, of those programs, and what, as well as other communications.
And policy governance has a position change of twenty-five thousand dollars or more has, David can't make that call.
Right.
So that, that would be, that would be my direction. I, I am needing to be, again, this has been talked about. The administrators have heard me talk about this now for all of, you know, summer through this year, you know, about the need to do this. I, I believe they're all in support of this. It's not easy because we've, we've been, we've been doing some things fairly traditionally and, and for a good number of years. Again, I don't know what the net, the net cost would end up being, but again, the twenty-five thousand dollars is there to try to allow me to, to pull that together.
So David, let me just try to net what I think I heard you say. If we put this sixty-six in, you would put that in contingency. But you already have, but you have some designs on how you could probably use that money with things you'll come to us in the future. Is that what you just, is that what you just said?
I don't want to, nope.
So sixty-six, if your decision is in the sixty-six, that would come right off. That would be added rather than, which would do all of what John just did.
Okay.
It would add to this number here in tuition.
So you're not changing the contingency number?
But what I have, and I know that questions have come up from the board, is that I have money currently allocated in the budget of the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for doing the, the special alignment and programming.
You're inviting us to take it out, David.
No, I just wanted, I, I know that there was questions that came up, and I'm wanting to just be really clear with the board. I'm, I'm not wanting to say I would use all of it, but I want to come up with a really delineated plan that pulls together communication and coordination of some of these other programs.
Are there any other areas that board members would like to recommend to administration, even if it's just to look at a what-if scenario? I think, you know, I mean, we opened the door, if we wanted to add students and take out some of that cushion, I think we've, we've already addressed most of the issue in terms of material impact through the tuition rate that was set. So I know it's not your recommendation, John, to not change that. So then we would go to the expense line. Is there any what-if scenario that an individual board member would like to propose?
I guess I'd, I'd like, I'd like to understand how much we're putting towards nutrition services to deal with the deficit. Is there a part of, an amount of money in there?
There's, there's fifty thousand dollars still going into nutritional services.
Okay. And what, what's the extra amount of money for the pension beyond the recommendation?
One hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Above the recommended?
Above the recommended, right.
And again, we think that's a positive, you know, you have positive trend movement in that area, and we're wanting to try to make sure that that continues.
Well, I guess, how, how much money needs to be taken out of the budget to get it to three percent?
Three percent, it has.
To get, put, to drop it to point, or I mean, point two seven percent. Off of the growth rate, I should say.
Off what?
Off of the growth, the three point two seven.
Yeah, that number, I have it here, this is a different computer, sorry. It's, it's seventy thousand dollars that it would have to be cut to get it under three percent.
Okay.
It's seventy thousand dollars?
Yeah, I, I have it here. It got to, this thing got messed up a little bit, sorry. Seventy-nine thousand dollars to get it to three point oh nine is what, what, that was the state tax commissioners.
Well, I know a community member was concerned about the high line item for copying fees. And you mentioned, you know, copiers costing a lot and the color versus black and white. But, you know, there's a lot of wasted paper in general, just, you know, a student will take a piece of paper and make a mark on it and doodle on it, and then that gets tossed, you know, just rings of paper, paper costs, not just photocopying costs. Or teachers copying, you know, pages of text and changing their mind and not using it after all, or just using it briefly, just seems like a lot of waste in the, the copying area. But another comment I had beside that is I was looking at my past tax bills, and just over the past four years alone, our personal tax rate is, you know, taxes, that personal property taxes that we pay has gone up over a thousand dollars. It's gone up almost three thousand dollars over the past sixteen years. And just in the past two years alone, four to five hundred dollars in each of those past two years. Neighbors, the same thing, they've supported the schools all along, but a lot of my neighbors don't have kids in the school system anymore. And they're like, we've had enough. We don't want any more tax increases because they had that increase of four or five hundred dollars last year, and they're like, we just can't support that anymore. That's just too much to ask. So, you know, it's out there. And just one other side comment to make is I think it needs to be made clear that that snow day that we did not take was not connected at all with the teacher strike because a lot of them are under the impression that we didn't take that day because of this teacher strike.
Right, well, that's.
So somehow conveying that to the public.
Well, that's a perfect, perfect opportunity to retell you, it wasn't. I thought it was a good decision. Board may think differently. It was a good decision until about three o'clock. And around three o'clock, it started to snow a whole lot more than we thought and was, and forecasted. But it wasn't connected at all. We do have our days currently identified to be made up. Two of those days on March second and third. And we know that community, you know, families have made some changes as a result, perhaps in travel. But those are two of those days.
But I think that you somehow need to get that across to the public. Because they have a bad taste in their mouth, that and the teacher strike, and they're like, enough, you know, we're not supporting any more tax increases, four hundred, five hundred dollar tax increases in a year. They're like, that's just too much.
Yeah.
And then?
In your defense of the, the school day, Julie can attest to this. Growing up, South Burlington were always the last ones in school, right? Everyone was canceled and it was South Burlington who was in school. We got the road crews. That's all there is. I mean, we got the road crews. So it's not a strike-related, it's just always been that way regularly.
It has, yeah.
No, it's just that the impression to the public is.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right.
They need to be informed.
Again, that, that was a pretty significant change in, in the weather pattern that, that afternoon. And I, I certainly, you know, I think if, if I had known that, we would have done something, probably canceled early or something. But felt it was warranted, given the forecast, to stay open on that day. Thank you, though, for that.
A couple of comments. I've been out of the budget loop this year for the first time in a long time, and I was pleasantly surprised to see what I saw tonight. So I commend you all for putting forth a budget that I think, Susan's comments aside, I think it's reasonable. Whether or not we get to the three point oh nine percent or not is a different discussion. On the other hand, history in South Burlington has proven that people don't always vote logically when an event such as a teacher strike happens. It's an emotional vote. And I just caution that, you know, if, if the vote doesn't go the way we would like it to go, not to take too much out now. Because, as I said, history in this city, school budget votes get voted down.
Well, and we had a discussion last week that it wouldn't be clear-cut. The same way it's not clear-cut when a budget is approved, like even last year, when it passed by a very narrow margin, it wasn't really clear for those who were not voting for the budget, why. And even this year, it was pointed out that there may be some residual feeling about a strike, and there may be a lot of concern, as we all know, about just education funding in general.
And are you, as a board, doing any community, any additional community outreach this year?
We're talking about.
So it's actually, it's with the board. We, we, we have a series of events that are coming up, and that will include, you know, board members and myself. We've got RETN, and I think you're right, we're certainly hearing the need to maybe do some more, Lisa, so.
Although, Lisa, we would, we would love to hear your feedback because we know you're the resident expert in voting. And we, we, seriously, we know that we're probably behind the eight ball in social media and some of those other avenues which people pay attention to now. Do you, if you have other thoughts, please.
Especially how we could get the people who don't have children in their schools.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I don't have any answers right here, but I'm.
So do you know, do you know of any, does anybody know of any parent groups who have started getting together? Or any hint of that? Because I know that that's happened in the past, where there have been groups of parents that have tried to get the vote out. Not that I'm looking at you to start a group like that, Lisa, but if you volunteer, then.
So Delina did, Delina did, you know, from the last meeting populate, thank you, Delina, put in a lot of the, and checked in with a lot of the schools around PTO meetings, staff meetings, et cetera. And obviously, if there are others, including what Lisa and anyone else has for ideas on here, we would, we would certainly love to have them. I think you have copies of that, too, maybe not. But we're looking at just, you know, is there a location, you know, what might that be? We've had in the past plays, you know, that we've done some things. The board felt that it wasn't necessarily the best use of their time to stand there during those types of events, but make sure we had information available on a sandwich, you know, a sandwich board where people could take information. Maybe there's an announcement that says, hey, by the way, there's information specific to the budget, you know, please take one on your way out, et cetera, at, at various events. So we would make sure that we would staff that. But anyway. So again, I don't, I don't know what you wanted.
Sorry, I want to point over here about zero increase in taxes. I think you provided a number earlier, John, on what that would imply to our, to our budget, right? And it's, it's several hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred and thirty-six.
So zero increase in taxes means a reduction in the budget from what you see here by several hundred thousand dollars. Several hundred thousand dollars.
It's more than four hundred or five hundred dollar increase, those larger increases, as opposed to, you know, a hundred.
Well, this is a, I mean, this, this increase here is two and a half percent, one, one point six two percent.
Yes, no.
So Susan, you're, you're feeling like this, again, you were giving perspective and information from the past. information from the past.
Right, no, this, I mean, seems reasonable. You know, you're talking maybe $200 for them versus the four and the five. They're like, if it's going to be another $400 or $500, you know, it does sound like, in talking with some of them, they've had enough of the increases and I don't know what amount they're willing to accept, but they're just like, enough is enough, especially in view of what the recent.
I also think in line of this, what the board said earlier around income sensitivity, that, that's, that always plays to be an important component and, and this may, it may be more troubling to some because they may have qualified and then won't qualify. As we know, some people don't even understand whether they should or should not apply. So, there's, there's, continues to be concerns around that when someone says, I'm on a fixed income and, and this is what I make and, you know, all of those types of things, yeah.
I think part of it is just not the dollar amount, it's cumulative. So over the last two years, it's been six and a half and then six and a half for 13 and now we're seeing another raise and it's just not, oh, it's only 100 bucks this time. But it's now, yet another increase. That's part of it. And then, just one comment, instead of looking to cut items, are we looking to maybe raise revenues and somehow maybe some advertising or like maybe the new turf field can be sponsored by a local car dealer so that's a zero income?
Do you know how much the new turf field costs? But I, I mean.
It's like $400,000.
It's really expensive.
So you talk to a car dealer, should they sponsor it, you put out a bond and, and they pay that yearly, maybe $45,000 a year. You know how much they spend on advertising?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So some of, some of what you're talking about, and again, I'm not wanting to overtalk this, that the need for coordinated unified service like alumni and foundation and we belong in mindfulness is to do, to pull some of that together. We do think, you know, some of our alumni don't hear, they, they go away, they don't hear about us, they've been out for 20, 30, 40 years. They may want to give back to something like that. And so that is in part in play, which we don't have, we have some activity going on, but we don't put a whole lot of resources there either. So some of that's that. In addition, we also do, as I said earlier, we have some outreach work going on that we never did before with people to the, you know, folks to the islands. The concern obviously is with downward trending enrollment, they also have downward trending enrollment too. So there's only, there's only so many, you know, children that would likely come. So, that is a volatile arena for us, but I think your point's well taken around how we can continue to market or share with, with folks what we're doing and beyond what people hear within the community about the city we live in and the schools that are here.
John?
I just, I wanted to say earlier, but Cindy, Cindy Reinkert was here and Kelly and Annette Harden and Susan are in the budget, our group this year. And we had five other people come. We had, we had three meetings. It was always one of those below zero. We're up in a new conference room here, so I, I'm thankful. I think I answered a lot of questions. I mean, it was just kind of like last week's board meeting and they were very thoughtful and some things look like they're, they're either rising a little bit or holding on, but things we did five years ago, oh, they really produced some savings. But, what's happening next? And Susan's point about the copying is, is a good one. So, I'm thankful and I wanted people to know. And Lisa couldn't do it this year, but we're, she's an alum and you're in good, it's in good hands still, thanks.
So is this adjusted then for the increased revenue, John, on that one?
Yes, it is. Yep, the spending's still 3.27.
The tax rate would be 1.62.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to triple check that, Elizabeth, because I had it interactive, but I, yeah, 1.62 and 2.61. So this line right here.
And I think it's probably worth pointing out that these two third providers do the parameters that we don't control.
No, I know.
Right.
Right, they, they come, the common level of appraisal is, is, because our property values are going up, which is good, that has a, tends to increase our tax rate. So that's, that's a good part of it.
So what was the change in the common level of appraisal this year to last, last year?
Yep. Last year was 97, 97 and 6100%. This year went down to 96.4%. So, if you do look at these two lines here, the tax increase would have been, if the, if the common level appraisal stayed the same, it would, the tax rate would have been half a cent.
Total.
Yes, and now it's 2.61. So it's two cents, basically.
Two cents based on the change in property value.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that, that is a key item that needs to get put out there.
Okay.
As far as in, I mean, that, the majority of that tax increase has to do with our rising property values.
I'm going to plug it in now, just double check that, but we, we've, we've been looking at.
Get it your way, Elizabeth.
Yeah, oh, it's, I'm sorry, it's just, it'd be half a cent, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So two cents, over two cents of the 2.6 cents is because of the common level appraisal. And I think that frequently gets lost in this discussion because we've done great everywhere, but by virtue of the fact that our property values have gone up.
Right.
It's going to cost us another two cents.
We haven't had to worry about it the last five years because of the whole, but, you know.
So, kind of just to recap, some of the areas that have come up that might result in a board recommendation to a change in the proposed administrative budget recommendations would be FTEs, it would be the substitute expenses, it would be some sophomore advisory incremental expenses, and copiers, some of the operational expenses. And those were kind of the key, I think the key items that there was some additional board discussion and questions on. Is there any specific recommendation a board member would like to make to change anything?
Well, I would also just put on the list of, is the additional money to the pension, the additional money to the nutrition. I'm not making a proposal that we change it at this point though, but I think those are two areas that if we had to be looking really at any additional savings. But I put that at the bottom of the list of what you just listed.
So do we have a motion to approve, to approve the budget with the change in the tuition rate as recommended by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? I want to make just a couple of quick comments before we take a vote. I think I would like to see a reconciliation on the FTEs. We just need to be really clear on that and maybe be prepared to show some history of enrollment and FTEs at budget presentation. Because I think a lot of people will have been exposed to the state numbers and I know that our trends are not similar to that, but I think we need to be accountable to taxpayers as to what they are. I think you are, you are pursuing some additional work on the substitute expenses. I do have a concern just about the precedent setting on the sophomore advisory co-curricular, just because if that is expanded and I sit on the steering committee that is looking at expanding that, that could result in a significant expense. So, that is a little bit of a concern there. And I think those, those would be my particular comments. Any other comments or questions for administration?
Yeah, I, I agree with the, the issue about the sophomore advisory, David, because it's, it's, if every teacher is involved in that in the future years, which was what they're talking about according to John, then that becomes a 55-plus thousand dollar expense. And I think that's a lot, especially for daytime work that we're already compensating teachers for.
There's a question whether it should continue to be co-curricular if it's an integral part of the personal learning plans and proficiency-based graduation requirements.
I think it's fair, fair feedback. We're, we're, again, there's training currently going on around how we're going to move forward with PLPs and PBGRs and it's likely the longer needs and approach is not going to be that. So, there's going to need to be a change. This is what I would say, some sort of, you know, in some ways a stopgap measure to provide the, the needed support to ensure we're doing, you know, the things that we need to be doing both now and, and next year. So, certainly I, I hear your feedback and we'll need a more delineated plan, I think, to be able to share with the board as we continue to move forward. Got it?
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. We ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, David, and thank you, everyone who worked so hard in developing a budget that I really think respects the community and, and some of the challenges we have at delivering the services we do provide.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is consider and approve the district meeting warning.
Yeah. So we're going to need to change.
Oh, it does change.
Yeah.
It doesn't change.
It doesn't change.
No, because it's still our overall, right?
So take a quick read through.
I didn't think you'd see anything wrong earlier.
No, I think it looks good.
So the annual warning includes the election of two officers and the budget in Article Two. Do I have a motion to approve the annual meeting warning as recommended?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Wasn't really listening. So that's amended for the different.
No.
It doesn't, the revenue doesn't change, yeah.
The total budget doesn't change.
That's right. Good, good question though.
Yes. So, we'll re-vote.
I was wanting it to be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
Great, thanks.
I'm not sure if that was legitimate.
Yes, that's of the, in the blue folder is the one that you guys.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, when we come to it.
So we'll move on to agenda item nine, executive limitations, global executive constraint 2.0.
Right, so number four has the rewording on the interpretation that was changed from the previous. No other changes were, were made.
I, I do it last.
Oh, Martin, I don't think you blew it.
Correct me, so I'm defer to Elizabeth this, this week.
Thanks for sending it in, too.
And is that an action?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we have to go through the?
Yeah, you should.
Just your needle?
Well, we just have to.
Just do the thing.
Go through the.
Check compliance and circle off. Hold on, I got, if I have to find it. Okay. Would you like to read this, Daniel?
No, this is not a reading.
We, we have to come up with a policy for the, for the next month and a half.
Actually, yeah, actually our six months is up, so we need to revisit the whole way we're doing that, but we won't bring that up.
So on 2.0, reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Okay, good. And we'll move on to the, agenda, item 10, the steering committee meeting agenda.
Is that the, I have the microphone on or is it?
No, it's the 21st. No, it's the 21st.
First. So, next week, Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday.
Is the steering committee meeting, at which time we'll provide an overview of the budget and you'll get it, you'll also get an update on task force. Those are the two items that are on their agenda, on your agenda. The 22nd, which is Thursday, is your scheduled school board meeting as a result of making room for that steering committee meeting. So, we posted that, or we've advertised that. There was some concern initially around re-changing that, but we've kept it the same. So it's the 21st steering committee meeting, 22nd school board meeting.
What time is, is it at six?
Time is late for the 21st.
I believe it starts at six, is that right?
Probably.
Yeah, I believe it's six o'clock for their meeting.
Will you let us know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six o'clock is what, is what, and we'll make, we'll make sure you get the agenda and warning. Cities take care of that.
Did we have some proposed topics?
It was, it was really, our focus was budget.
Yeah.
And, and.
Master planning.
Master planning and visioning conversation. And those two are probably, you know, between us, the city, and then the master plan, both on receiving information and making sure, you know, we're.
Would it be appropriate to include a legislative update?
Sure, yeah, if you want to.
That, I think that might make sense since we're trying to be more proactive interfacing.
Can we mention something about the position paper and any of those things?
Well, we've presented to the council separately and.
So it, it, it'd be redundant, I guess.
Yeah, I think that that would be.
I think you certainly can say they're available. I mean, they're for, for, you know, we've had copies available at meetings, so making that available is a good thing.
Yeah, I'm, and to give you all an update, even though it's not on the agenda, but I will, an announcement.
It's not allowed.
Late announcement, is that I've been going ahead with one of the proposals, the one that has, has to do with fact finding. And, and I've been meeting with folks, including the folks at Vermont School Board Association, and have some initial language that I drafted that has been edited that will be re-edited because I didn't agree with the edits. And hopefully, actually sometime next week, going to have a meeting with other legislators who are school board members to go over this idea that VSBA is actually trying to set up. I'm trying to have them, to some extent, carry this so it's not looked at as a South Burlington issue. And we'll probably, or hopefully, we'll have a bill on that issue by the end of next week. Our other proposals seem to be getting kicked around by various different people, so I have not pressed those yet, at least, until I find out if, if they need to be pushed. But this one, the fact finding one, separately needed to have us do that, so.
You know, I, I get a, from Jeff Francis, I get a legislative update and so I've just gotten one and he has some current bill activity that's on there that, some of which maybe Martin's talking about. I'm happy to forward that to you.
Yeah, there's not much.
There isn't much going on.
Education yet, although I will tell you there were about 40 people at their hearings yesterday and the room only holds like 20, so the hallway, all I have to say is thank goodness I'm on judiciary and not education.
Wouldn't fit, right?
Because it sounds like it's, it's been zoomed, you know, so. But they have some really good people on the education committee, so they, I think they're going to get something done.
So we'll do legislative update budget and master planning and visioning as the agenda items.
Our recommendation, good.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn, to go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining where it may be disadvantageous to do that in public session?
So moved.
I'll make it short and quick.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.